Evan, Caladonia, Canisius.
Here.
Genacio.
Here.
Groveland, Lester, Lima.
Here.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Here.
North Dantville.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, when my nation under God and in this court will be redeemed in justice for all.
We have some meeting minutes for your consideration this afternoon. The first set is from our last regular meeting in 2022 on the 21st of December. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, I look for a motion in the second, please.
Move Lester.
Thank you very much. You had a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There carried. And then our next was our organizational meeting on January 3rd. Does anyone have any possible changes they'd bring forward at this time? Hearing none, I look for a motion in the second, please.
Lester.
Abol. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There carried. We do have two public hearings scheduled for this afternoon. I'd ask Shannon to please introduce both of us.
In regards to local law number G dash 2022, this local law includes certain provisions of New York State Public Officers Law Section 3. Specifically, it expands the residence requirements for all county-employed directions officers and deputy chair. So many of these public officers reside within the county or any contiguous county. All other county-employed public officers are simply required to be residents of the United States. With regards to local law number H dash 2022, pursuant to County Law Section 201, public officers who are appointed or elected for a specified term can only have their salary increase during their term by adoption of the federal law. This local law is being introduced to meet requirements of Section 201 and provide salary increase to certain county public officers currently acting within a existing term.
Thank you, Shannon. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any member of the public in attendance who would like to speak to either of these two public hearings that we have open at this time. If you do, come forward and sign off the podium, please. Hearing none, I'll ask if there's any supervisor at this time wishing to comment on either of the public hearing that we have open. Hearing none, we'll keep the public hearing open through the remainder of the meeting and ask at the conclusion before we vote on these if anyone wishes to comment. We do have two communications, please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be held on Thursday, January 26, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Avon Town Hall. And thank you note from Michelle.
Thank you. We do have two abstracts of claims to consider this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims, claim number 2022 dash one, and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract of claims? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move this second abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this second abstract of claims? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted.
We do have three resolutions this afternoon. I'd prefer the agenda.
Appointing Livingston County Veteran Services Director as the Veteran Indigent Burial Designee for Livingston County, proclaiming February 3rd, 2023, as Four Chaplains Day in Livingston County, and appointing member to the Livingston County Planning Board, Donald West.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? Hearing none, I look for, excuse me, a motion in the second for vote on these.
North Dantville.
Abol. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None, there carried. I'll go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted.
Next on the agenda, we have some resolutions that are going to require a second vote.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing a professional services contract for biomedical patient care-related electron electrical equipment and patient handling equipment, testing for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Mantis Medical Compliance Group.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this professional services contract? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Reliant Staffing Systems, Inc., Doing Business as Career Start, Messer Americas, and Genesee Community College.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Arbor Housing and Development, Casa Trinity, Inc., Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Rochester, Doing Business as Catholic Charities, St. Ben, Livingston, Compuere West, Inc., Coordinated Care Services, Inc., County of St. Ben, Genesee County, Goodwill of Finger Lakes, Hillside Children's Center, Lakeview Health Services, Living Opportunities of DePaul, Inc., Mental Health Association of Rochester Monroe County, Inc., New York State ARC, Inc., Genesee Livingston Orleans Wyoming Counties Chapter, Doing Business as Archglow, Town of Livonia, and Village of Livonia.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any question or discussion on these contracts? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Allison T. Prince, Catholic Charities Family and Community Services, Heritage Christian Services, Inc., Maria Benzoni, and Unlimited Care, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Commissioner of Social Services to sign contracts with the following, Livingston County Health Department, Livingston County Information and Technology Services, Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Livingston County Veteran Services Agency, and Livingston County Workforce Development.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following master subscription and services agreement for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, Blooming Health, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this agreement? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development, Vera Realty, Doing Business as Willow Creek Venue, and Party Man Catering and Rental.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this contract? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Mr. Demming, authorizing the implementation and supplemental agreement number three with New York State Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design right-of-way incidentals and right-of-way acquisition, construction and construction inspection phases, and funding in the first instance 100% of the federal aid and state Marchesele program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore. Dow Road Bridge, B I N 3316270, replacement Town of York, P I N 4 L V 0.03.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, Bonadilla and Company, L L P, C N S Engineers, Inc., and Livingston County Water and Sewer Authority.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Mr. Knapp, establishing an account, Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Resolution authorizing a transfer from unassigned fund balance in the General Fund to the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation Operating Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this transfer? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Establishing various ARPA project accounts.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing allocation of American Rescue Plan funds for various towns.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Authorizing allocation of American Rescue Plan funds for various Livingston County departments.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns or questions on these allocations? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia, Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Increasing mileage rate to 65 and a half cents per mile effective January 1st, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caladonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Dantville.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater, West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1858, absent 151, adopted. Establishing paid cash amounts for various departments for the year 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, I will go, please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.